Okay, I'll get this meeting started here, the joint meeting of the City Council and the Montclair Planning Commission. So we'll take a roll call first, and I'll ask the City Clerk to do the roll call.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Ru.
Present.
Mayor Dutray.
Here.
And Commissioner Martinez is going to be joining us a little bit later in the evening, and he's going to be on Zoom. And for the audience planning commissioners, Commissioner Sanchez. Commissioner Sagoon.
Here.
Commissioner Patel.
Here.
And Commissioner Eaton will not be in attendance at this evening.
Would she be on Zoom, or is she just not present?
No, she will not be here this evening.
Okay, so we have three, five City Councilmembers present, and then we have three commissioners present, and then we're expecting a fourth commissioner, but that commissioner will be on, will be on phone, or Zoom. Okay. Okay. And then, as far as commissioners concerned, I apologize if you guys don't have a table, but you do have a mic there you can use, that mic there, that Vice Chair, so you'll be able to use that mic there. I would ask that if, since we have a mandate that went into effect today, that everybody please wear their mask. If you don't have a mask, staff can provide you a mask. If you need a mask, we'll get you a mask. And if, obviously if you're speaking, feel free to take off your mask at that time. So as you know, this is a workshop on the update of the Housing Element of the General Plan, the document we've been working on since 2018. And the Housing Element, obviously, is a very crucial component of the plan, especially with the state of California, for us to have this approved by, I believe, in February, March. This has to be finalized and resubmitted back to the state, for us to meet all the state requirements, including those what's called the Regional Housing Needs Assessment numbers. So I'm going to give this to staff. Before I do that, I know we have one business item. This relates to AB 361, but this is only for the City Council, if I'm correct. So what we'll do is, once we're done with the presentation, the workshop on the Housing Element Plan, obviously we'll have public comments, then I believe I'll just adjourn the Planning Commission, and then the City Council itself will, will take action on the business item. So with that, we'll start the presentation, and I'll give this, I'll, go ahead. Use your mic, Sergio.
Were we gonna salute the flag, or did I miss that?
It was on the agenda, but we can salute the flag. How about, Sergio, you're the Vice Chair of the, of the Planning Commission?
No, I'm not the Vice Chair, but I'll be honored to.
Okay, how about you, I know you're the senior member of the Planning Commission. We'll do a flag salute, good idea.
Please make sure your phones are turned off and your pagers. Follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, I pledge allegiance to the American, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I recognize the Vice Chairman as being Jace L. Sanchez, and of course Chairman is Manny Martinez. So let's go ahead and start the staff presentation, and who's gonna take the lead? Are you Ed, or is that gonna be Mike? Mike Diaz?
Well, Mike can certainly jump in. You basically said everything that I was going to say. Is, obviously, you know, the housing element is very important to the city, it addresses our need to comply with the regional housing numbers, the RENA numbers, and this will go a long way in assisting the city in addressing that concern. Presenting this evening will be Sarah Walker. She'll be going over, I gather, the bulk of the Housing Element update, and Mr. Diaz will participate when he feels it's necessary for him to add additional commentary. I did want to go back one second to the business item. Was the Council planning on acting on that prior to, or after?
We'll take it after, after public comment.
Okay. With that, then, I will hand it over to Sarah Walker. She's coming up to the podium now to do the presentation on the Housing Element update.
Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. I'm okay keeping it on, if you're, I mean, if you're, if you can hear me, okay. If you can't, please let me know. So, good evening, members of the City Council and the Planning Commission, and thank you very much for having me. My name is Sarah Walker. I've been before, before you before. So I am a Senior Project Manager with National Community Renaissance, and I've been working very closely with Kaiser and with staff to update the housing element. So we're here to kind of give an update on where we're at tonight. So just as a quick reminder, it is one of the mandated seven elements of the city's general plan, and it is the only element that does require, by law, to be updated every eight years, and it must be certified by the state. We've had the unique opportunity to get to update it with the general plan, which has been, I think, really good in terms of planning, looking forward, and actually identifying viable opportunities for housing in the city. So the city is updating the Housing Element for the 2021 to 2029 planning period. So there are kind of three phases that we've been going through with this update process. We came before you during kind of the community outreach, public participation program phase, where we've been, we were seeking input on housing needs and goals. We completed our public review draft in September, and it was submitted to the state in October for compliance review. The state has 60 days to review the element and provide direction. We are finding that there, the state is being very, very thorough in their reviews this round, unlike other rounds. So it is definitely very detailed. So the next steps will be, we should be getting our letter back from the state within a couple weeks, and we will have probably comments to address, and we will then resubmit it for a second review with the state. We're gonna be working with staff and Kaiser to ensure that the general plan stays on track, and that we align the Housing Element with that effort. I did want to highlight a couple pieces of legislation that actually passed in the middle of the Housing Element update. As I said, we are seeing that the state is more focused this round on actual implementation of the Housing Element, and that cities should plan for and incentivize the construction of affordable housing. So the first bill that I wanted to highlight was AB 1398, and this changed the law to require that cities not only adopt, but obtain compliance for their housing element prior to that February date, in order to avoid having to rezone within one year instead of three. The second bill, AB 215, requires, starting January 1st, that cities post all Housing Element drafts for public review for a time period of no less than 30 days. And finally, AB 1304 provided additional guidance on the affirmatively furthering for housing, which was a new section in the Housing Element for this cycle. And the goal of affirmatively furthering for housing, or AFFH, was to take meaningful actions to overcome patterns of segregation. Just to quickly go over again, you know, what drives the Housing Element update process is the regional housing needs allocation, or RENA. The RENA began up at the state. They allocated approximately 1.3 million units to the SCAG region, and then SCAG allocated those units across the member jurisdictions. So Montclair's allocation for the sixth planning period was 2,586 units. I'm sorry, 2,593 units. It was adjusted numerous times, but our final number, 2,593. So I'm here tonight, there's kind of two main ways that we're addressing the RENA through the Housing Element. And the first is the housing plan. So I wanted to go over, the city has four goals that were included. The first goal is to improve and conserve the city's existing housing stock. A few of the programs that are currently in place and included in the element included code enforcement activities, housing rehabilitation programs for homeowners, and promoting energy-efficient design. The second goal was to remove and mitigate constraints to the improvement or development of affordable housing. This included expediting and prioritizing proposed affordable housing developments through streamlined processing, which included establishing objective design standards in line with SB 35, updating the zoning code to be consistent with state requirements for special needs housing, and generally reviewing the development standards to ensure that they are facilitating affordable housing development. The third goal was to provide a variety of housing types to accommodate special needs groups in all economic segments of the city. A few of the programs included under this goal were to ensure that there are adequate sites available that are zoned appropriately to accommodate the RENA, encourage lot consolidation and marketing of any city-owned surplus properties for the development of affordable housing, and also the city is exploring an inclusionary housing ordinance. And finally, the last goal is to provide equal housing opportunities and affirmatively further fair housing for all residents, including those with special needs. To implement this goal, the city has a few ongoing programs, including providing reasonable accommodation procedures, as well as funding services and workshops in partnership with the Inland Fair Housing and Mediation Board, supporting nonprofits that provide job training and other anti-poverty strategies, as well as homelessness assistance. The image is not showing up, but generally I just wanted to kind of highlight that the other way the city, the other key component the city must address in the Housing Element is the identification of adequately zoned sites to provide a variety of housing opportunities for the income groups that are outlined in the RENA. So for the 2021 to 2029 planning period, the city had the unique opportunity to plan ahead through the general plan update, and to identify opportunities for higher-density development while preserving existing single-family neighborhoods. So to ensure that the Housing Element is consistent with the city's new proposed land use plan, the land inventory focused on vacant parcels that were zoned for residential or mixed uses within the new proposed land use element, as well as underutilized parcels that are developed with a couple different types of uses, either older buildings, vacant or expiring uses, parcels that are developed well below the permitted intensity. So what this meant is that our search for opportunity sites was focused primarily on the downtown and major corridors. These are areas where the city has land that is zoned at 30 dwelling units per acre or higher. Many of them are higher with the new general plan. And that 30 dwelling units per acre is a magic number for the state. It's what they feel is the default density in order to facilitate the development of affordable housing. So the city staff worked to select 25 opportunity areas that can be developed or redeveloped with residential uses. These sites are primarily located along Holt Boulevard, Musson Boulevard, as well as in the northern section of the city around Montclair Place and around the Trans Center. I'm not gonna go through this table line by line, but I did want to provide it. In total, if you look at the last line, we identified 146 acres of land that is adequately zoned for residential uses, and we were able to accommodate approximately 4,196 units. And this total, as you can see, is distributed amongst the various income categories, in line with the RENA. So to summarize how the city is meeting their six-cycle RENA allocation, this table shows that we, the RENA is on the top line, and we were able to take into account credits, which are projects that are already entitled or under construction, and reduce the RENA amount by that number, which was, we, the city identified 668 units that are currently approved or under construction, that are market rate units. We also are able to count accessory dwelling unit potential applications. We estimated that there would be a total of 10 annually for a total of 80 during the planning period. So finally, that fourth line shows the land inventory, the 4,196 units, and ultimately the city has, is able to show a surplus of sites, a surplus of units accommodated through the land inventory in these various means. So with the creation of an accountability and enforcement department at the State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, they now have dedicated staff that's focused on holding jurisdictions accountable for their housing element commitments. And so I just wanted to, again, kind of highlight the benefits of a certified element. It does allow the city access to timely funding for infrastructure, roadway improvements. It also ensures that developers are eligible for obtaining state financing, and it also does avoid lawsuits if the general plan should be deemed invalid due to a noncompliant housing element. So again, our next steps, we're expecting to hear back from HCD imminently, and we will make any revisions. I think generally we're planning to come back for adoption early next year with the Planning Commission, and then ultimately with City Council, and hopefully we'll have certification early next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the end of the presentation from staff?
Yes, it is, and we're available to respond to any questions members of the Council and the Planning Commission may have.
Okay, let's start with this. How about Plan Commissioners? You guys wanna start off?
I do want to note that Kaiser Ranguela is also here this evening, he's in the back, so he's available to respond to any questions as well.
Okay. All right. Any questions from Plan Commissioners? Anybody wanna say anything? No? No?
I have a, I have a comment. And the comment is, so, we're pushing the transit.
I wanna speak, put the mic a little closer.
Transit-oriented, oriented, livable, walkable communities. So we also need to focus on providing this transit, whether it may be the buses, bus shelters and that. I've been allocating and pushing for that. So we want everybody to follow these, these rules, but it's my opinion that we're not providing the, the services, so, so our public can't do that. I, I take that back. I know that we've done a really good job on, in the north, Montclair corridor, where the train is, and in our Omni-Trans and all that, but the rest of this, the rest of the city, you know, the south, the whole corridor, and some of these other north, south, east, west, arterial roads. Thank you.
Thank you. So no, no comment, no, go ahead.
I just had a question regarding COVID and the reflection of increasing COVID rentals. Is that included in the report? In other words, recently, I mean, the last two years, rentals have skyrocketed too because of COVID. Is that update, is it reflected in the reports in terms of the current rental structure that you have in your reports, or how does that adjust? How does it reflect it?
So your question is how the increase in rents in terms of, due to COVID, how, it's not something that ultimately was taken into account. I mean, there are set income rental amounts that are state standards, and so those are still in place in terms of what is considered to be low income, very low income, moderate income. Those are a state set amount.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, no more questions from Commissioners? I don't see any Councilmembers running a comment right now, but I will say this, I'll start off, I'll start off by saying this, that the cities are not in the business to build homes. That's not, that's the private sector. That's what the private sector does. I think, I think there's an expectation that we see these, these large numbers of 4,000 units, you'll saw on page, where is it now? Page five, 2,593 units. The cities are in the business to plan. That includes through our land use. When we had redevelopment, we did build units, but we don't have redevelopment anymore, so it is the private sector. Our, our job is to make it, and in these days, under the current California laws, is to make it easier for the private sector to construct residential units. So that's why we're here today, and, you know, frankly, I will, I will say this, we have a huge housing shortage in the state of California, and, and we can argue all day why that's short, but nevertheless, the state legislature, if you like it or not, has placed huge burdens now on the cities to, to build many residential units. That's more difficult to do than actually to, to conduct. So I can say in my, this is my third or fourth cycle, in the past, this document, the Housing Element Plan, was basically something you put in the bookshelf, and it collected dust. The, the, the state doesn't want that anymore. The state is now taking a hammer approach, and cities that don't comply are going to be, including legally challenged if they don't do the Housing Element Plan. The State Attorney General's Office now has set up a task force. The sole goal is going after local governments, cities and counties, that refuse to comply with the Housing Element laws. That's how serious the states become down. So as cities, we like it or not, and there are things here I'm not happy with, we like it or not, we have an obligation to comply with the Housing Element Plan. In fact, we also have an obligation to build residential units. Again, much more difficult to do, to, than to accomplish. So I'll start with Councilmember Denise Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Walker, I just have a question about the grid that's on page 13. And it's about, it's the page about our land inventory, and, you know, how many acres, and the income level. That's the one. So my question, just for my own clarification, is how are these income levels determined, and how are we determined where those income levels would be?
So, we took more of a general approach. Instead of selecting specific sites that would be, some cities, you know, said this land can be just for above moderate, this could be moderate, this, I mean, we could have selected a handful of sites that purely, we said, these are zoned, this is going to be affordable housing. Instead, we tried to take the approach of, these are appropriately zoned, and the idea would be more of like a mixed income approach. So looking at the, the number of units, what I tried to do is kind of identify areas that could accommodate a realistic affordable housing project. And typically, we try to find parcel, or try to build projects that are between 60 and 100 units, because that's what we can finance. And so that is kind of what I tried to do in terms of breaking it down into the income categories. I actually, for breaking it down into the income, I used the same percentage that the state allocated for the, for the different income levels. So the lower income is, I think it's roughly 35 or 40% of the city's total RENA, which is the very low and low combined. So, and this land inventory table is simplified in a lot of ways. There are a lot of different realistic capacity assumptions that went into this. We had to reduce the amount of acreage to account for infrastructure improvements, and then account for mixed-use development, and then divide it by income levels as well.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
Mr. Ru.
Yes, several questions. First, when the mayor said cities don't build housing, he, he's correct in that sense. I just take a little different view of it. In a way, we do build housing. We determine the types of housing that we want in a community. If a developer comes to me, personally, if I were the city, and says, I'm going to make a copy of Century Plaza right here with all those beautiful condos and things like that, and we say, yes, that's what we want, then we are creating housing. What we need to say to that developer is, that's fine, but we have a housing crisis here. People making $300,000 a year don't have to worry about where they're going to live, but people making $57,222 a year do have to worry. And I think it's incumbent on the city to, to tell them, I'm sorry, you're not a good fit for our community. Because I look at it this way, there's plenty of high-end stuff around. I, in my private life, or professional life, as you know, I do government affairs and a very large board of realtors, and the California Association of Realtors, which I am also a member of, and I don't sell homes, I just do public policy, fair disclosure, is very big on wanting more affordable ownership and rental housing. So we, it's incumbent on us to do that. To me, before we look at high-end housing, we should do the low end and the moderate first. Say to the developer, I'm sorry, that'll have to wait a few years, our families deserve better. That's just my point of view. In looking at this, and I don't know if you can answer it, and certainly, I could probably find it if I need to, if it's out there. Of the $57,222 a year median household income, how big is the, the family for median household income?
Four.
Four. Because if my statistics are right, that comes down to $4,768 a month. If you were to take out an average of 35% for social security taxes, that nets them out $3,100 a month. That's really difficult to live on. And the more we can accommodate those families, the better off we are. I'm, again, I'm quite frankly not worried about the people who can afford $600,000 for a house. They can, if, if they want to, they can go build one, they can buy one here and improve it. These are the families I'm very concerned about. We have families who work here who can't afford to live here. I know with your units, quite frankly, a family of four, $70,000 a year or so, $60,000, somewhere that, they cap out of it. You keep them there, but where do these families go? That's the issue I have. I, I, and, and there's a lot of history on this, but if you go back into the 1940s in New York, and I'm sure you know this, Robert Moses, who was the planner in the city of New York, decided that the families who were not high-income enough, he just went in with a bulldozer, literally. He gave them only a few weeks' notice, tore down their homes, and told, here's, here's a check for $300, go live somewhere else. You're poor, we don't want you here. Those families used to work in that neighborhood. Now they were pushed to the outer boroughs. They had to take subway trains, buses, and he said, oh, by the way, if they park their car, we're gonna charge them for parking. We have to, and that's been where planning's been going for the last 70 years, and we need to break that cycle. I want the people who work in town to be able to live in town. And so in looking at that, do we know what the, we know the median household income, do we know the median workforce income? I can look that up, and I can back to you, because I think it's somewhere around $30,000 a year, or 32. I, I think I can find that data. That's distressing to me, because when you take out, that gives these families very little, and we're already living in, in a place where rent is sky-high. A room in Montclair goes for $800 a month, and we've gotta break this cycle. These families can't afford to say, oh, I'm going to live in Colton, and I'll just commute to Montclair for my basic, you know, minimum wage job. So I really hope we're going to look at this with that in mind, and I know you do. Another question I have is, in looking at the housing for the future, because cities do attract development, is there an opportunity for us to start looking at many of the developers out there who are doing prefab housing? We're not talking about the traditional mobile home. I can go to Fleetwood Enterprises and show homes that can be craftsman cottages, they can look like Southern Colonials, they can, and you really don't know they're prefab homes. They're very, they're far less to build, and we can bring them in at a more affordable price. The other thing is, when you look at boxable, and that, and just use that example, kit homes, you know, it wouldn't be a stretch to turn around, boxable does a 625 square foot home for $50,000. You can get two of them, click them together, so for $100,000, exclusive of land cost and infrastructure cost, you have housing. And I'm wondering if you're looking in that direction, it's something we might be able to do.
Yeah. I, it's interesting, in terms of single-family housing, obviously that's not something that I, I've necessarily looked into. We actually did look into modular for multifamily, and we toured several different facilities. Project Frog was one of them. And interestingly, when we compared the cost, yes, you save on time. So you can more quickly get modular built. However, it still didn't, stick build is ultimately cheaper. We have, and we are, you know, a GC and cost estimator, so ultimately what we found was that, well, modular is faster, it's actually still quite a bit more expensive at this point in time. Maybe in the future, that won't be the case. Single-family, though, that is an interesting idea, and there probably are developers out there, I don't know, like Manny Mansions, or I, maybe even Habitat may go that way, I don't know.
And I can certainly start looking.
Yeah.
At some of the contacts I have.
I did also want to just mention that, if you haven't had a chance to look at the affirmatively furthering fair housing section in the Housing Element, this is new, it was pretty lengthy, but, you know, we really did try to look at kind of the land use patterns, look at some of the, you know, protected classes, and kind of try to look at what's happening in the city, and where we're putting housing, and not trying to further any, you know, patterns that are out there.
And, you know, another thing in looking at this, in just land use in general, I, we need to avoid this situation, and this is something you can help us with, of saying, this is gonna be the neighborhood for the upper class, this is where we want them to live. And we may put one or two affordable units in there, but primarily we want this, the neighbor, it should be, in most general planning practices now, post the last 70 years of, you know, the Robert Moses type thing, to blend it a little bit more, so that it's all over, and it's not just, okay, we have two or three units here, 10%, it's inclusionary zoning. It's inclusionary zoning, wipe our hands, that's good. It's got to be blended.
Yeah, I didn't include it in the presentation, now I wish I had. But we included a couple different maps in the sites inventory. So after it presents the sites, there's a few more maps after that that talk about the housing sites in regards to access to opportunities. And so doing exactly what you're saying, trying to place affordable housing in neighborhoods that have high access to opportunity.
Right.
And similarly, we also, I mean, I also wanted to take a realistic look, though, and I had our in-house analyst score the sites for tax credit purposes of how they would score in terms of access to amenities. Because that's something that you have to be able to maximize if you're going to get funding. So the other thing is, is that the state is starting to prioritize. They're giving extra points on financing applications for projects that are located in high and highest resource areas. So they are doing, that is shifting already.
And in looking at this, subsidized housing is how we, is the model we've been using for the last 25, 30 years. And I'm thinking we need to start working with the development community so it doesn't have to be subsidized because we didn't have to do that before. Part of it is, we unfortunately live in a region where the jobs are just not paying. We, I can't change the job market, it'll be 30 years to change that. But when you look at a median household income and a median workforce income that's very low, you know, we don't necessarily just subsidize. We need to give them an opportunity to try to buy something. And even if it's very small. So I hope we can start looking at that, that once they cap out of a subsidized unit, where can they still buy in Montclair?
Right.
Because I like the fact that I grew up here. There are many, many families in town who are multi-generational. And we need to look at that. And then I won't go on all night. One, there is a bill out there by Senator Susan Rubio. I know you all know it because you're supportive of it. It's a two-year bill that allows the legislature, if it passes, to look at the impediments to building affordable housing and housing in general. What are they? Why do we always have to subsidize the affordable housing? And I had the opportunity to speak with Senator Rubio just a few weeks ago on it. And she's very excited about the prospects of seeing what we can do to remove a lot of these barriers out there. It's, land cost is what it is, we're not going to change that. But there are other things we can do, so I'm encouraged with that. And I'm also encouraged with a bill by Anna Caballero, which would allow communities such as Montclair, any community, to take the vacant strip malls. And if they've been vacant for two years and the owner wishes to do it, we can't force them to do it, to convert that into housing. And it makes a whole lot of sense to me because the laterals are already there. You're generally on major corridors. You may not have to subsidize anything, you can do a lot of things in them, either as they are or tear them down and rebuild. In talking to the author, she was looking more at just what you need to do to reconfigure what's sitting there. So I'm somewhat hopeful with that. But I do believe that as a community, we're responsible for the jobs that we have here. Cities say they don't create the jobs, but they do. And, you know, we have a major shopping center. The people who work at Macy's or somebody who works at McDonald's or Starbucks probably isn't making a whole lot of money. And on nights when it's cold, it'd be sure nice if they had a quick commute home, whether they drive or walk or take a bus to this community rather than have to commute, you know, 30, 40 minutes away. So I'll just keep that right there. And I can contact you separately on some of this. Thanks.
Tara, thank you for the presentation. The last time I had interaction with you was about a year ago, I think. And it was, the weather was about the same and we were going through Zoom calls. And I was locked up in an office here at City Hall, just learning how to run things. And here we are a year later. And I will admit that the housing issue is something that I haven't fully grasped in a year, and I still have a lot to learn. It sounds like, though, and I've been a big person of this persuasion, sounds like from what I have read in parts of the report and from your presentation tonight, that the state is further placing upon localities such as us requirements that I view as cookie cutter, broad approach style requirements that not necessarily, they think they're a one-size-fits-all approach, but they don't take into account region. They don't take into account migration of people from one sector or one region of the state to another. I know census figures have showed that we've had some influx of individuals move from LA County into our county. And they're moving eastward, looking for more affordable housing. So here we are, we reap the benefit of that. But I just do not like how we are, as a council, as the locally elected body, once again, asked to do more with more restrictions and our hands tied behind our back. And that's unfortunate. Many people that go up to Sacramento are from local government, but they forget that they're from local government once they're up there. And they forget many of the things that we are forced to implement. I have a few questions, but I kind of want to go back to, because it's been in the back of my mind, Commissioner Patel's question regarding rental. And correct me if I'm wrong. Were you asking, sir, if the rental average, the average price of rents, if they either fluctuated or increased or decreased because of COVID in 2020? Is that what you were getting at?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
Our report, because that piqued my interest, and I recall reading this prior to the meeting, on page 46 of our report, not sure if Commissioners got the report, but it states that in Rent Cafe, which is a nationally internet listing service for Montclair, and I'm quoting, indicates that the average rent in Montclair in December 2020, so this is even taking into account the whole part of the COVID shutdown, was $2,051, which is up 8% since 2019. And the average apartment size is 884 square feet. That sounds about right because folks that talk in town, they have said rents have been about 2,000, 2,500 for relatively small units. And that definitely needs to be addressed. The housing crisis and issue and affordability is not going to go away by any means soon. On page 12, you had list, or you stated something regarding a default density percentage. What was that percentage?
It's actually not a percentage, but the state, in order to count the site or to deem it appropriate to accommodate towards your lower income RINA, the default density is 30 dwelling units per acre. So the site has to have a minimum, it has to at least allow 30 dwelling units per acre at minimum.
So this brings me to another part of the, I was writing notes as you were talking and giving the presentation here. Let me go back to another page, it might even actually be page, it's actually page 11. Underutilized sites that are zoned for residential mixed use. The first point, I'll just say low densities. Are you looking at those sites that are already low density with the goal or the intention of increasing their density so that way they can accommodate further units? So are we trying to get away from any property that has low density on it?
We looked at what was, we took the general plan proposed land use map. So we assumed that kind of what was being planned for in the general plan was something that had been, you know, had gotten community input, elected official input. And so the sites that are in there are not requiring any changes beyond what is proposed in the general plan. But, and vacant sites obviously are vacant. In terms of underutilized sites, typically, the threshold is that the density would be three times what's existing on the site. It would be considered to be underutilized in terms of intensity. The land improvement ratio typically fits below 1. That typically is a sign that something is kind of, and there's value there in redeveloping. Older structures are typically buildings that are older than 50 years. And then vacant buildings and expiring uses is kind of in line with what Mayor Protam was describing, that, you know, it's maybe a strip mall that sat vacant for, you know, quite a while and it's just no longer functioning in its kind of useful purpose.
And on page 14, you stated that 668 units in that column, which are labeled above, they're not low or low, they're not low or moderate income, they're above income, they're at market rate units, correct? 668, are those anticipated or are those we currently identified?
Those are per staff, projects that have been approved or are under construction.
Well, maybe a combination of both?
Yes, it would be a combination of both. Those that are waiting to get permits because they're in the plant check process and those that have been recently completed before June, before June.
Right, like it doesn't have its certificate of occupancy.
So there, so we've accounted for those things that you see that are out in the, and about, and you've recently worked on approving, like the Village at Montclair project.
So that would include the Village?
Yes, 350 units minimum on that is part of that number.
Good to know. And then as far as the ADUs, they're listed 46, 28, and 6. Of those, I know we have the, what, four in present development on Palo Verde? Go ahead, you were going to...
Yeah, there's two single-family residences there and a total of four. So each property has two additional ADUs on there.
And which column would those four, for example, be applicable to? Above?
Yeah, I mean, it somewhat depends. Ideally, there's a number of ways that the city can kind of determine the income level, depending on what the property owners are planning to do with the units. I didn't necessarily account for those. What I did is just assumed, again, an annual amount of 10. So that those would just, ideally, in the application for ADUs, the city might have a line or some sort of information that they're asking for from the owners on how they intend to use it, if they want it, if there will be any affordability restrictions on it. Maybe it'll be used for in-laws and it'll be free, I don't know. But ideally, if the city can start collecting that information, it's helpful.
The majority of the ADUs that have been approved were for single-family homes where the, it seemed, at least based on the conversations we had with them, they were intended for someone of their household or mother-in-law or father-in-law to stay near the family that's in the main unit. A few of the other projects, like the ones on, one of the projects on Palo Verde are purely, you know, for rental purposes. So they're capitalizing on that particular option where the owner doesn't live there necessarily or hadn't lived there or was not required current to, or with our current law now. But they're doing it for investment purposes. So those are fewer, but the majority of them are for family-related purposes.
In terms of the breakdown in this table, these were allocated, SCAG thankfully did a study that across the region determined kind of what the affordability levels were for ADUs. And so for each county, basically, they had kind of a methodology that they recommended for assigning affordability. So it's typically easier with HCD if you, unless there's something that otherwise shows there's some, a unique pattern in the city. It's, we typically utilize the SCAG study for allocating those units.
And if I understand it correctly, then the distribution you see of lower and moderate is accurate, we're pretty consistent with what I just described to you earlier about how the ADUs are being developed at the moment.
They're being developed for?
For housing for family members or other people who would take advantage of being able to be close to their families in the main unit.
So it's hard for us to get some designation of the ADUs until we know what the ADUs are being used for by the owner, correct?
Well, yeah, ideally, in order to report in the annual reports, the city, it's ideal to gather some sort of information about how they, how, if at all, the affordability will be kind of...
They're just building it to let a family member live rent-free.
It's essentially lower income, right? Because it's free rent. Yeah.
That's what I was kind of getting at is, and then how...
I mean, HCD likes to see deed restrictions on their lower-income units. That's what they, you know, count to be lower income. With ADUs, I think it's a little bit, you know, it's less common to have a deed restriction. I mean, we did talk about the idea, there are programs out there where, you know, the city could offer incentives in order to, you know, have a property owner build an ADU that has some sort of deed restriction, probably be kind of some sort of development agreement between the city and that property owner. But right now, that's not necessarily what's, that's not what's happening.
And did you say that our goal is to have at least 10 ADUs a year within the city?
Yeah, based on trends, that was what we aimed for.
We estimated, based on the clip that we've seen over the few years, it's about 10 to 12 per year. That doesn't mean that in one year, it can spike to 30 and then the next year is 15 or 6 or something. So it just, it depends on, on the, I don't know, on a number of factors. But typically, it stays pretty steady around 12 to 15, somewhere in that number.
And if I understand the new law that went into place that affects the ADU development scenario, we technically cannot limit, we cannot restrict a homeowner from building. So if we did have 30, 50 applicants show up, we have to allow for them to be expedited and built, correct?
Yeah, under the law, the, every property owner is entitled to ask for an ADU. That doesn't mean everybody will. And there is a limit in terms of one dwelling unit per single-family neighborhood and then one junior ADU. So the maximum could be, if you counted them both the same as ADUs, that would be two. But not everybody does that. Because a junior ADU has to be carved out of your main house, which not everybody wants to do.
Per neighborhood, you said?
Yeah, for all single-family and multi-family in the city.
So on a street, let's just say Cambridge Street in northern Montclair, if a resident builds an ADU, a property owner, does that then restrict someone four houses down from doing so?
No. Every, if you have 12 houses on one street, 12 people can ask for...
Okay, that's where I was confused. I thought you said there was one per neighborhood or street.
No, no, one per property.
Property, that's, okay.
For single-family and then one junior ADU if you desire to have that.
Right, and that's a little bit more cumbersome to accomplish.
They would have, if you have a small lot, they may not fit.
Right.
And that's the other, that would limit ultimately the size of what you can do with an ADU. But typically, you're entitled to request for one detached unit of an ADU or one that qualifies for that and one junior ADU, which would be carved out of the main house.
Okay, that's it for now. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time.
Okay, I know, Bill, you have your hand out raised.
Two items, more just for edification. One, when you look and ask the question, why is the state getting involved in housing? Why are they telling cities what to do? In the last 30 years, we have been running in California a minimum of 180,000 housing units a year short. We're not building enough to accommodate the people who are here. The state's getting involved because the housing over the last 30 years that has been built, the vast majority of it, has been built for the more well-to-do. So there's nothing that's being built to accommodate those who are working in a community. And that's why the state is getting involved. You know, I hear cities all the time say, well, we want to maintain the ambiance of our community. That's fine, but where do your workers go? And I actually, at the recent League of Cities meeting up in Sacramento, asked a city and she said, I really don't care where they go. That tends to be a common trend. You know, we should know where the workers are living. I'm not saying take a, you know, an inventory, but have an idea. We want them living in our community if we can. That enhances your community. And another item, it's just that went through the state legislature that I'm proud I have supported in many groups, most of the nonprofit housing providers. It was an anti-discrimination bill. What's been happening in California is they've been building a lot of different units, whether planned unit developments of single-family homes, whether they're multi-family units, whether they're ownership or rental, where the less expensive units, those that were less than market rate, the families in there were being told, I'm sorry, you can't use the community facilities. You have to have a separate entrance. The pool is off limits to your children. Oh, that nice little dog park we put in here? I'm sorry, it's only for the market rate families. This was pervasive in California. The legislature, they had a bill, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the author offhand, to prevent that from happening, saying it's discrimination. And sadly, many, many cities opposed that bill. And they said it's their right to have, to build and create the type of a community that they want. So we need to make sure going forward, this bill ensures that. But that type of discrimination shouldn't happen. If you live in that apartment, whether you're, somebody else is paying your rent, whether it's subsidized, the point Councilman Lopez said about the families in the ADUs living for free. You know, if you're living for free, whether you're at a subsidized unit, you shouldn't be in a situation where you can't have the same access as everybody else. The community room is off limits to you. So I'm very glad the legislature solved that. And again, you know, if you say, why are they getting involved in housing? That's a good example why. Thank you.
Okay, I have some questions. Before I go to my questions, I know we have members in the audience, including on either a phone or by Zoom. So first of all, Andrew, we have anybody on the phone or Zoom that want to speak? If they want to speak... So first of all, Andrew, we have anybody on the phone or Zoom that want to speak? If they want to speak, either you will dial, you dial nine, star nine, to raise your hand, and if you want to speak on Zoom, you raise your flag, hit the speaking flag. And in my question to the audience, if members of the audience want to speak, there are speaking cards to where the, where the door is, a blue, is it a blue card? A green card?
A white card.
White card? No, they're white cards. These are blue cards. If you wish to speak, and it will give you an opportunity to speak after I'm done with my questions. And so with that, I'll go, I'll go ahead, and I'm gonna focus on slide number twelve. Yeah, and slide number twelve is the housing opportunities site, and I believe in the past housing element periods, there was a section on housing opportunities, but that was something that the city itself had to do during the, during that planning period after the documents been approved by HCD. And I believe that's been reversed now, and one of the requirements is we have to identify the sites as part of the document approval. Am I correct?
We've had to identify sites for the last couple of cycles. This time, there's an additional template that we have to fill out, but it's pretty much the same information parcel by parcel that we were providing before. It's just in their template this time.
This is their in-template.
Yeah.
So in looking at this, I know that many of the sites north of the freeway, especially west of Central, is part of the, either the North Montclair specific plan, the Montclair Plaza specific plan, or, excuse me, Arrow Route specific plan, and, and those plans call for mixed, mixed uses, mixed uses, which includes either retail, commercial, or, or residential. And, and then we have, we've identified sites basically along Holt and Mission. And I don't know if these sites were in the previous plan, Dan, if, were you telling me, but my question to staff is, and I believe the general plan, what we're doing, the proposed general plan, is we're taking many of the residential and commercial areas and place them into a mixed use, which allows commercial, residential. So my, my question to you, and I'm gonna focus on four sites that I'm targeting, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, the corner of Central and Holt. So Mike, let me understand what's going on here. So these, these, these sites have been identified to be included in this document as proposed residential, as a housing opportunities site, but they're also called mixed use. So how does, how will this work? If, you know, if, if the city deems that this corner has a strong commercial or retail component, and we have an applicant comes in and wants to build residential, how will this work? Or maybe, maybe Kaiser is here for him, he can speak, but maybe you can both tell me, what, what are we proposing? If the city feels it should remain retail or commercial, but a developer or property owner believes they want to build residential because it's got a higher land use value for them, what regulations do we have in place to deal with it?
Well, the, and I'll let Kaiser speak more eloquently about this too, but as you recall, during the process, when we went through the charrette to try to define what we want to do for the future of our town, we talked about corridors.
Right.
And we talked about areas that, that would be, you know, open for revitalization and maybe change the way we do things. So the bulk of all these properties are on those two main corridors, east, or three corridors, the Central Avenue corridor, east, north, south, and then the east-west corridors of Holt Boulevard and Mission Boulevard.
Okay.
The idea here is to create a mixed-use zoning that would allow for development of either, either a mixed development, mixed-use development, or a development that wasn't mixed-use, depending on, on those locations. And so this gives the property owners or those development properties on that site some flexibility, and you'd be able to approach things from a market standpoint, as well as from a land use standpoint, with doing something different than you see now currently, where everything is sort of segregated into separate kinds of uses. So it doesn't mean that every property will be exactly the same or exactly developed as a mixed use, but it, the opportunity would be there for those properties to take on those responsibilities. And I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kaiser, that the properties, the uses that are there now, as long as they're generating and operating well and everything else, they can stay there as transitional uses until such time when the market conditions change where we might go a different route and be able to, to, to effect a mixed-use development that would be something we would go forward with in the future. But this is the general plan level, and we're still working on the zoning implementation part of this, which would give us the tools and the requirements on how to do that exactly.
I'm hoping we talk about the zoning requirements, that, that this council and this planning commission has discretionary, some discretionary authorities, so if, if there is a development that comes in expressly wants to build residential and no retail, and staff believes that retail or commercial should be a component there, there is still a need for a component there, that that's not by right to the property owner, that, that falls into, for example, a condition of development permit or, or another form of a land use authority approval to be granted by the city to that property owner or to the developer. So I don't want by right, just because we say a mixed use and you can have residential there, that a developer comes in and just assumes they can build a hundred percent residential.
Right. And, yeah, and those are the, the actual conversations that we've been having together with Mr. Rangwalla and staff to, to think through some of these implications for the zoning, because it may not make sense for a small site to do a mixed use, but maybe a larger site could do one. And so there may be different mechanisms that you have to put in place and factors that would allow you to do a successful project, whereas if you don't have those, those things in alignment, it, that might not be the best thing for you to do at this time. So we have, we're not fully, it's one of the things we need to still do to iron out, but that's what we want to.
I know there's a big push for housing, and there's a big push for need for housing, but, you know, there's also, and I realize brick and mortars are being beaten up by Amazon, and there is less a need for, for retail in all facilities, there's more empty retail commercial spaces, but also realize that, you know, the city needs to have an economic engine too, to generate money for the general fund. I hate saying this, but it's been proven, you know, housing doesn't pay the bills here. Fortunately, the way our property taxes work, we only get fourteen cents on a property tax, especially under Prop thirteen, because they appreciate, you know, the most you can increase, increased property taxes, two percent per year, even though the property value has grown by twenty percent. And that's why we've been, always been a very strong sales tax city, because the opportunity to supplement our general fund. I know we're also doing other things to, especially for residential, the, the other fee there, the, oh, the community facilities, CFDs, we're doing to offset the loss of general fund. So that's my concern is, is that, you know, you know, if, if there is no commercial need, and yeah, okay, I understand that, but if there's still a strong commercial need in certain areas of the city, I don't want to lose those opportunities going forward. I want to have the authority that the city council and the planning commission can utilize. We feel that residential does not make sense here at this time, even though maybe under as housing opportunities site, so.
That's true, and, and what's true today may change again, you know, in ten years from now.
You're right. Ten years from now, who knows where we'll be. So, you know, right now, I guess probably everybody wants an Amazon in their city, because now, under effective early this year, Amazon decided to change the titles to their real estate properties and put Amazon, and guess what? Now they're a point of sale. So, yeah, I'd love to have an Amazon Montclair because of the point of sale and, and generates money for this, to our general fund. But go ahead, Kaiser. I know we're supposed to talk about economics when it comes to building more housing units, or especially general fund.
This is actually a great point, and as I was sitting back and listening to some of the comments, I, I reflected what an opportune time this is for this city, because you have an opportunity that very few cities in Southern California have, and here's, here's why. The general plan, you know, you amend it every twenty years. In this case, it's probably more than twenty years. The housing element happens every eight years. So there's a different timeframe that both are operating. So oftentimes, you may be updating your housing element with no reference or no updates to the general plan, or to the specific plan, or to zoning. Guess what? You have the once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to have all of those documents be updated at the same time. We started the market study. We got our understanding of what the market is. And based on that, we worked with the community to develop a vision. All of that happened at the general plan level. The housing element is a component of the general plan. Because they're being produced at the same time, they're one hundred percent in sync. So some of the comments that were made by Commissioner Patel and others, and Councilman Mayor Portem Aru on transportation, on economy, on jobs, they're all being addressed in a comprehensive manner and in, in sync with the housing policies. We're currently working on a zoning ordinance, so we'll, we'll be bringing to you, when we bring the general plan, is zoning ordinance, saying here's the vision, here's the law, how we implement that vision with the, with these zoning regulations in place, addressing exactly the kind of things that, that you're bringing up. But the short answer to your question is, the, the, the sites that you identified are mixed-use commerce and mixed-use neighborhood. And the terms neighborhood and commerce are suggestive that one is at the intersection of a busy intersection, at the corner of a busy intersection, and may facilitate more commerce because of high visibility. It may not be desirable, at least on the ground level, to have housing units, so it's reflective of that. The other site is away from the intersection and therefore is classified neighborhood, allows, commerce does not require commerce. So this is intended to be a very broad and flexible framework that allows the market to dictate, rather than be very dictative in, in terms of what can happen on a particular site, but then comes back in the zoning and then lays out regulations on what specific standards would, 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 would be put in place that would spell out where you can have commerce, where you can have residential. Can you have a hundred percent residential building, for example? So all of those things will be spelled out in zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
A couple more questions. Tax credits. And you mentioned, when you're looking at the housing opportunities sites, you also were trying to base, to determine which sites will have the highest tax credit score well, which in my, my past life, that's something I was involved in. And so can you, which sites are, will test well for tax credits?
There's a map in the housing element, and I, I apologize, I don't have a printed map.
Just, you have a chance, oh, you have a?
Yeah. People don't usually want to get into this much detail, so I didn't include it, but I, I like it.
When you deal with the affordable housing developers and they're applying for tax credits, it's a huge issue for them to make sure they get funding for the projects.
It, it is, and so on page one eighty-two, which is figure six dash six, and again, this is, this is kind of a back-of-the-napkin best guess. We tried to look at proximity to grocery stores, pharmacies, schools, parks, the, in line with what the low-income housing tax credit program, the geographical points align with, and tried to.
Okay, there we are. And then one more question, religious facilities in the general plan. I believe there's a, there's a new law that passed two years ago, if there's a religious church that had a nice big property that's very much underutilized, that you can't build residential properties on the church, no matter what the zone is?
I don't know that that one passed. I know that eighteen, eighteen fifty-one passed, which means that the city can't require more space. We've actually developed four or five different, it's a viable, I do think it's a viable thing. I don't think that the legislation passed allowing it by right, but I, it may keep, it keeps coming back, I think.
There's so many bills, it's hard to keep track of what's gonna pass, not gonna pass. So does, does the general plan, are you visioning the general plan for, when it comes to church properties? I'm not picking any churches, but if a church decide or, or want to build housing, is that, will that be a permit, permit? How will the general plan address that? How, how are you proposing to the general plan address that?
I don't think we need to address that, but Kaiser, do you have any converse thoughts on that?
And allow civic users, religious facilities, institutional facilities, not residential. So that's something we will have to take a look at the legislation and allow in the general plan to be in compliance with the legislation. So we'll certainly take a look at that.
I think we should look at that, maybe add that, because again, I don't look at any churches in town, but there are some churches that are large, that are not being fully utilized, and perhaps they can take some of their property and convert that into residential, especially they're located in residential neighborhoods already, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm done. I know I was gonna go to the audience, but Mr. Lopez wants to speak, and once Mr. Lopez is done, we'll open up the audience. Thank you.
Thank you for indulging me, Mr. Mayor. Let's, let's piggyback on the religious properties or the civic accommodate, in which case they could perhaps add housing, whether it be for nuns, priests, lay, laypeople to utilize, but also if they wanted to rent to parishioners at low-income rates or median-income rates. I do know that a church in Bowling Alley converted that into their church for somebody that was not aesthetically pleasing, and it was in distress. And they had since, I believe, built two or three-story housing units that they allow for low-income families to, to utilize, folks that are just coming out of incarceration and getting rehabilitated, those types of needs, and that's what they've dedicated their units towards. And I think that's a, a great idea, something that we should entertain, and I'll piggyback on the, with Mayor's comments on that. Miss, you're called Kaiser, but I know that's your first name. Thank you, Rangwalla. Go, go ahead. You sent us.
I was just gonna, you know, it just again sparked an idea. I mean, most churches are, are right in the residential neighborhoods.
Yes.
Those are intrusive and, and not compatible with residential uses. So to reuse some of those parking lots for residential users to accommodate, just as you're suggesting, makes a lot of sense, and certainly something we can look at incorporating in the general plan.
Yeah, and when I say churches too, it doesn't necessarily have, it could be market rate, it could be affordable, it, it could be any income rate.
Also, something to look at, the, the old, my old church property, and I have sentimental value attached to it, that's where I grew up and was raised in the church, eleven two fifty-five Central Avenue, it's on the northeast corner of Central and Phillips. I believe it's six and a half acres, or is it nine acres? I forgot what my former pastor and business partner used to own that property. It has changed hands twice. COVID has affected what their current intended use is, and there has been rumor that the property may want to sell. Now, or at least finding a developer who would be interested in developing the property for now some housing use, and we do what we did with the, at least look at the feasibility of doing that. I would appreciate it if staff can perhaps thirty days from now say, hey, we looked into this, it's a go in this area, it doesn't look good on this area. I think that's something that we should, we should look into. I think it's a very ripe and, and potentially advantageous piece of property to look into. Now, with the discussion between Mr. Diaz and Mayor Dutre, regarding the properties on Central and Holt, Director Diaz, you, you stated if the properties, and I'm paraphrasing, if the properties don't perform to a certain standard or as expected or as desired, then we can address that and encourage the property owners to go, I guess, in a different way. One, what is the metrics used to determine if a, if existing properties are doing well? And the, the metrics, the standard, go, go ahead and answer that before I make my comment, because that may change my next comment.
Well, I wasn't trying to imply that we would go out and actually encourage and, and sort of push people to do something differently, unless they really wanted an approach to us first about the possibility of, of making some changes to their property, because they determined that their properties are probably more valuable being redeveloped into something else different than what they currently have. So in that regard, you let the market deal with them, and they usually approach us, and then we give them, we tell them what, what could be done or allow them, we can work through a process. But one of the benefits, I wanted to mention earlier about the mixed-use proposed zoning for these areas, is we talked about impediments earlier, like zone changes and general plan amendments and specific plan amendments, those are all time-consuming and expensive. plan amendments. Those are all time-consuming and expensive efforts that you have to go through. And by having some mixed use in there, where there's already built-in flexibility, and you can do some things that you would otherwise, under normal zoning, be precluded from doing, that's a benefit. And that's not only a benefit for the developer, but as a developer, it's a lot less work for the city to go through. But you have to have development standards that help you reach these ideal kinds of situations, where you can build high density, or you can build mixed use, or you don't build mixed use. And that's what we're working on, in terms of fleshing out what those standards might be for the zoning element, part of this project.
With respect to that particular intersection, I know we have, and I'll call it the 7-Eleven property on the southeast corner, Drive Time, which I believe is now STG, correct me if I'm wrong.
Right.
On the northeast corner, we have the shoe store on the northwest. And then, of course, we have the Cardenas property on the southwest. I just wouldn't want those existing property owners and businesses to feel like we are pushing them out. I mean, if the market is hurting them, then perhaps they will fold and say, we tried, let's reinvest somewhere else. But I wouldn't want us as a city to discourage them in any way. Although I understand that with time, the properties may have a much more advantageous value, depending upon what's there, an idea that, hey, this might work better. I still think that, as the property owner, if I were them, I wouldn't want that impediment, or at least that discouragement. I, at present, given the amount of traffic that comes up the bridge and down into Central and Holt, I have a hard time seeing mixed-use or housing at that intersection and area right now, because I think we're gonna, we're asking for some serious problems regarding how, traffic and congestion and whatnot. So I just, right now, conceptually, I just can't grasp it. Then we have the looparounds there with Central as well, that I think would be problematic. I'm sure those will get worked out on an engineering aspect. But anyhow, I'm uneasy right now, seeing housing units in that particular part of town. But jury's still out with me on that. I'm not a hard no. But as of now, I'm just kind of skeptical.
Well, again, the plan is not to dictate as what's supposed to happen right away, or anything. This is a plan that gives flexibility to the property owners for making the changes when the time is right. And you deal with all the difficulties, or issues, or whatever that are present at that time, as part of the development review process, which is what we do every day. So, yeah, so this is not meant, we don't go out and pressure people to do anything, or make any changes that they're not themselves willing to do, or usually participate in some way, fashion on their own. Or sometimes, if they don't want to do it, they sell to someone who does.
True.
Yeah.
True. Thank you for your explanation. Thank you for indulging me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So let's take some comments from the audience, and then after that, I'll come back to the planning commissioners, see if they have any questions. So I know somebody just submitted a speaking card. Do we have that speaking card?
Yes, I have, I have two cards for this item. Bruce Kulp has had his hand raised the entire time. And then I have one card for the next item. So, what, do we go to Zoom first?
Let's go with Zoom. As Bruce's been waiting, we'll start with Zoom then.
Okay.
And I'll remind everybody, they have five minutes to speak.
I'll be brief. Thank you very much. Just wanted to say that, you know, the issues of the state making requirements are basically the fault of the city for not putting in sufficient housing at, you know, affordable rates. You know, you complain about the state mandating things. If this had been, if the cities had been working hard at making affordable housing long ago, the state wouldn't be bringing the hammer down now. So, I'm not sure that the blame should be all on the state. Second, there is developers out there willing to build affordable housing. I just saw in the paper today, Fontana has just opened up 60 units. The average, the rates on those units are going for mid-400s to mid-1200s. They are also high-efficiency standard housing, and they're gonna put a medical clinic in there. So, it's, there's developers out there that are more than willing to put these types of things in here. I think Montclair should prioritize that, looking for property owners, and, you know, working with these developers that will put in these types of lower-income housing, and reduce the amount of homeless and unaffordable housing out there in the cities. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Who we have next?
Right. Next is Jonathan Cool. Oh, Cook, sorry. He's cool though. All right.
Hello, how you doing today?
Hi, I'm very good. The project on 1068 Silicon approved just a few months ago. We're starting the construction on that. And we're excited to start on that one. We've purchased a couple of properties in the city for, in Section 14, and Section 23. And I was just looking at this map and stuff. I'm not sure if these numbers are like set in stone yet or not. But just from hearing the comments from the council members, it seemed like, like, for Section 14, if it was like 20 to 30 per acre, we probably want to do like townhouses, or something. And that would probably be like 600, 650, something like that, not very affordable. If it was maybe a zone like mixed-use commerce, or higher zoning, then we would definitely entertain like doing apartments, which would be smaller units, and would be more affordable. So I'm not sure if these numbers are already like set in stone, or, but it sounds like you guys would be, want more like density and more housing that are more affordable. And we haven't started, like, we just got these properties, and we haven't started mapping them yet. But like, we'd want to work with you guys, and coordinate with what you guys want. And work with Mike's been great on our other project. And so that's just kind of like trying to talk about this from the beginning, before we start. And having the architects, engineers work on these things. And, but if that's something that is more desirable, or necessary, that we could try to like shift gears and do that. So, that was just my comment I wanted to-
Oh, great. Thank you. And we can't, we can't speak on these specific projects. These are entitlement projects you're presenting, so there are a set of laws we have to go by. But this is basically a discussion of the housing element plans. I'll encourage you to contact Mike Diaz, if you haven't already, and Mike will be the person to go through it.
Definitely, yeah.
So, but welcome aboard. And you say, when you say 14, does that include the bowling room too?
Not the bowling, yeah, but we were talking to them.
Up in the west of it?
The big property next to it, yeah. And like, I know, like, I've seen newspaper articles just recently in the area, like, the vacancy rate in Kimona, which is right next door, is like 1.7%, which is like the lowest in the area. I mean, there's a big demand, there's waiting lists for apartments, and people, they need them, so. Okay?
Great. Thank you. Welcome to Montclair.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Don't get rid of my bowling alley, though.
All right. Who do we have next? Andrea?
Pamela Zeisler.
And Pamela is out here. Come on, come on down.
My name is Pam Zeisler, and I live at 10975 Fremont. And I also own the property next door at 10982. And this is kind of more of a question than a comment. I don't know if that's okay or not.
Go ahead.
I own horses, and I have since. I moved there in 1973, before it was Montclair, and got annexed, one of the first groups that ever got annexed into the city. And I've always owned and maintained horses. And the landlord north of me expressed one time, building units on his property. And we're 60 feet wide and 300 feet deep, each of us. And I said, you can't do that, because you'd be encroaching on the area that I use, because he kind of does whatever he wants. Do I lose what I have?
Well, I can answer that question. Obviously, you may have easement rights. That's a question for an attorney, or go through a title company. But you may want to talk to staff about that too. Perhaps staff's got some history of that as well, they can inform you. But I know, I have a city attorney on my left, but there could be easement rights that you may have a right to. But I can't answer that, I can't answer that question without a professional looking at it for you.
And my, my other thing too is, it's, I'm like called underutilized, you know? And I feel like that's hurtful to me, because it's my sanctuary. There's no park in Montclair down here.
Yeah.
And I've suffered a lot, because it's crazy. The last five years have been illegal businesses, businesses on the corner of Mission and Fremont.
Yeah, the cannabis, yes.
And it's almost intolerable. And it's where I go. I don't want to put anything on it. None of it.
I understand.
But, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Okay. Is this the last one? Anybody else on Zoom?
No, no one else has their hands raised.
James will be the last one for this item. Hello, James.
Yes, hi. Hi, my name's James Park. I'm in-house counsel for STG Auto. We're here on Holt and Central. I don't know if you can hear me well.
Yes, we can hear you.
I was just following up on our use of this property. We've invested a lot of time and effort to make this, you know, better, to generate income for the city. If it changes later in the future, all our investment will have been lost. I was just wondering, do we get a grandfather clause? I mean, how does this work?
Well, James, I will speak as mayor here. And first of all, we appreciate you being on that corner. I know you took that corner from the previous auto mill user, I forget the name of now, they relocated.
Drive Time, yes, sir.
And you guys obviously occupy that, the entire block there. So, no, I want, first of all, I encourage you to talk to Mike Diaz, our community development director, if you haven't already. But no, the goal here is to make that a viable commercial. Eventually, these, the general plan is proposed for a mixed use eventually. We just have these housing, this housing element plan that we have to comply with, come up with opportunity sites for possible future housing. But no, it's not gonna change your use of that site, the ability to sell car. Or Mike, have you talked to Mike Diaz before, James?
I received-
Have you give your phone conversation with Mike, and then he can better understand you. But I can tell you right now, yes, we want you at that site.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a quick follow-up question, if that would be okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
So with regards to mixed use, I know that Montclair has maximum building height of six floors, is that correct? If we were to do a mixed use, is that residential on those higher floors, and then business on the bottom floor?
That's one concept, yes.
I see.
But I would encourage you to contact Mike Diaz, and he can go through all that stuff with you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
And thank you for being, and thank you for expanding your business here in Montclair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. So we're done with public communication. And do the planning commissioners have any more questions or comments regarding the housing element plan?
I have to pull out a card.
No, planning commissioners don't.
No, no, the lady in the back.
Oh, okay.
Oh, she has one.
All right. Before she come down, but does the planning commissioners have any comments or questions? No? No, all three of you? All right, come on down, please.
And I'm, I'm actually a Realtor. I work with Realty Masters and Associates in Chino. And, you know, I've been hearing everything that everybody's been saying, and I actually sympathize with you, because I am the Realtor for the property on-
Be pleased to address the city council. Thank you.
I am the Realtor for the property on the corner of Fremont and Mission, and I'm aware of what the problems have been. I came into contact with the owner on this particular property a couple of years ago, to help him secure a couple of tenants, and they turned out to be nightmare tenants.
Right.
And in doing that, you know, and everything that I've learned from the history of this property, me and the owner have now been talking about me just, you know, suggesting to him, and him also considering just selling the property, which I think would be more beneficial to the site number 24. And I'm wondering if that particular site is going to stay on a mixed use as for commercial, or is it going to be for residential? Because he would like to sell it as commercial, if that's the option there. And he's got two lots that are next to each other. And there, he hasn't joined them together, but they're two separate lots.
Yeah. And I want to ask you also, if you can contact Mike Diaz, if you get his phone number. Because we cannot discuss entitlements. I know the city attorney's over here, and that's because if a developer decides to develop that property, and put housing there, and residents opposed to it, there's a process. You have to go to the planning commission, and you have a right to make your public comments to the planning commission, and then that gets appealed. If you want to appeal to the city council, you come to the city councils. We have, we can't comment at this time. So the purpose of this meeting today is to talk about the housing element plan. But please contact Mike Diaz.
Okay.
We can exchange business cards.
Okay.
And then he can answer your questions. But thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. So, I don't, we end the public comment on this portion. And I know that the purpose of today's meeting is to get feedback. The housing element will go to the planning commission first, and then we'll come to the city council prior to this deadline in February. And so, do, Mike, Ed?
I think we have a clear understanding of how to continue with the process. Of course, this was just an update on the process at this point in time. We still have a lot of work to do, as Mr. Rangwalla had indicated. So we'll take everything that the city council members of the, as Kaiser also indicated, we want to synchronize both the general plan update, and the housing element update simultaneously, so that they reflect appropriately with each other, as well as addressing state law, as it mandates for us to impose certain requirements throughout the community. So, when we do bring this before you, it will reflect not only today's conversations, but an ongoing process to develop this out.
Thank you. So I want to move on. I know that we have another member of the public that wishes to speak. Andrea, am I correct? I believe under public comment.
Yes.
And then the city council has a business item to also take action on. So-
And the comment is on the business item.
Okay. So, we have no other members of the public. So I will do this, Dan. I will adjourn the planning commission, if that's appropriate, by the city attorney. I'll adjourn the planning commission. I believe your chairman of the planning commission, Manny Martinez, is on the line, so if he's there. Are you there, Manny?
Yeah.
If not, I know the vice chair, Jaceau, is here. So we'll go ahead and adjourn the planning commission. You're welcome to stay, of course. And at this time, we will now go under the business items, which is, we just have one item regarding AB 361, which is a standard item. It's on our, on our agenda, in terms of holding public meetings under the COVID-19 public health emergency. And we will go ahead and take the public comment on this item.
Okay. We have a card from Carolyn Raft.
Oh. And thank you for the audience for being here today. Hello, Carolyn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. I just wanted to comment on this, because this is something that we have recently done at the, I'm on the board of the vector control, and we recently just did this very same item. And because some of the requirements for an emergency, the posting requirements are kind of a little bit ridiculous. So, this will take care of some of it. And I just want to, I'm glad you guys are going to be doing this, and that it will help you in the future, as well as it's helped us. So, I just want to comment and say thank you.
Thank you very much. And I want to ask that city council, is there a motion for approval?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for the item as presented this evening.
There's a second. Second by Johnson. And let's take a roll call vote. There it is. Item is adopted 5-0. Obviously, we will meet Monday. I will not be here physically. I'll be in Georgia calling in the meeting. So Mayor Portim will be running that meeting. And I do want to say one thing, as I end, a couple of things. I won't be here, well, I'll be here by phone, but the CIO, obviously happy holidays, and with your families. Thank you. We're adjourned.